At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, June 10th, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Pid here. Price.
Here.
Longton.
Here.
Hema.
Here.
Duden.
Here.
Charnell.
Here.
And Shoblam.
Here.
And that brings us to the next item, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Duden and a second by Mr. Price. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from the May 13th, 2012 Planning Commission Meeting.
Motion approved.
Got a motion from Charnell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have you got a couple of seconds? Who's second wants a second?
Whatever.
Well, we'll let, we'll let Mr. Hema.
Thank you.
Second that. All in favor? Aye. Approsed? Motion, or opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Please, before speaking, record your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Yours is on the agenda?
I'm just here to get information about the mural.
Oh, okay. Well, that brings us to number six here, which is the public hearing for the public art murals.
Commissioners will be somewhat familiar with this. Commissioners will be somewhat familiar with this as we had a presentation at the last meeting from the Historical Society. As I mentioned in the materials that you all received, the grant application that they made was approved, so they are going ahead. So it's good that we came in and had the presentation at the last meeting because they are in a relatively tight timeframe to get this process. So, as I mentioned to the commission at the, at the last meeting, there is a requirement under our ordinance for a conditional use permit to be issued before a mural on a building in the downtown location can be approved and placed. So, Bill, I could get you to help out here? Thank you. Yeah, make it look, this one too. Okay. That should be good. Thank you. Getting a little bit closer. The applicant who's a Historical Society has asked permission to place two murals in the downtown. One on the north wall of the building currently owned by Jim Burkhart in this location, which again faces a parking lot to the north. And the second one is a building that's owned by John Althoff, used as a warehouse building for the hardware store, which is here, just south of the winery, again facing the public parking lot. And again, in our ordinance, if there's going to be murals in the downtown location, it is a requirement that they do face public right-of-way, so in this case, both sign, proposed sign locations do do that. I have notified everyone within 350 feet of both of these properties. There's a lot of overlapping property owners, but we did notify them by mail. We do have one resident here for, for information, I think, and if there's questions or comments, you'll certainly be allowed to, to make them. And we also published a notice of public hearing in the, in the beacon. So, this is a public hearing tonight on the request by the Historical Society for permission under the conditional use permit to place two murals on the two buildings that I've identified. You saw it at the last meeting, and this isn't a specific proposal in terms of the artwork, but this again is the south wall of the building owned by John Althoff. Here was an idea that was presented in the application for the grant of a painted mural, historic mural, in this case, I think that's all Planning Commission members looking over the town at the time, but just a one example of a, of a, of a historic portrait, a historic painting that could be placed on the building. Whether this is specifically the one or not, I don't know. We'll have to kind of see as that goes, but you get the, they get the idea. And similarly, on the north wall of the property owned by Jim Burkhart, there would be a, a different painting in that location. Our ordinance, at least in this example, fortunately, is, is pretty clear in terms of what conditions have to be met if the Planning Commission is going to recommend and the City Council is going to approve a conditional use permit for murals of this type. I've looked at each one of the, of the six conditions in our ordinance and feel that the proposal made by the Historical Society does satisfy those, those conditions. So again, tonight is the, is the public hearing. To the extent anyone wishes to, to present questions or comments from the public, this is the opportunity to do it. The commission can also have an opportunity to ask me questions, should you have some as well. With that introduction, would you care to listen, or would you like to?
Just listen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then I guess since there is no public, public comment, if there's questions from the commissioners, I'll be happy to try to answer them as best I can.
Does anybody on the commission have a question about it?
They have a time when they're looking at starting that?
This year.
This summer?
This, yes. Yep.
I'm assuming there'd be a final approval as far as what is on the murals?
They would have to submit for the actual sign application permit, a representation of what it is that they're going to put on the buildings. And they have, as, as I, as I think Steve mentioned to the commission last time, they have quite an array of possibilities in terms of what the scenes may look like, so we'll have to wait and see what they are.
I hope there's not too many that have a voice in what that is.
As an editorial comment, I'm sure? Yes, okay. Thank you. I won't be involved in the selection, as far as I know, which is fine with me. Now, I think everything that I've heard, we, we've had some conversation with chamber board members, some other folks around town. I haven't had anyone at this point come and comment to me that this is a crazy idea, something that would really be negative, have a negative impact in the downtown. There seems to be a lot of support for the idea, so I think it would create some interest and some, and some new amenities in the downtown for those who live here and the visitors that come here.
Well, and the pictures that I saw look like they'd be kind of neat ones, just pictures you haven't seen for a long time.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, and I think that's Kurt's point, is, is there's a lot of good scenes that I've seen too, and it is going to be interesting to see which ones are selected.
Yeah.
If there's no further questions or comments, then again, the process here is to close the public hearing and then consider the resolution, which I've recommended, is a positive recommendation to the City Council for approval of a conditional use permit.
All right. Any other comments before we close the public hearing and move on? At this time, I'll close the public hearing for the conditional use permit for public art murals, and that'll bring us to discussion items. And of course, our first one here is Resolution Number 2013-4, Conditional Use Permit for Public Art Murals. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Second. I've got a motion here by Mr. Duden and a second by Mr. Price and actually, Mr. Longton. No? Hema, again? All right, well.
A petition?
I guess.
Do you want to take the second?
I'll take the second, okay.
I'll give you the next.
All, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to Resolution Number 2013-5, Mail Clinic Health System Final Plat. I think everybody's got a nice big drawing here. Seems to me, didn't we already go through this one?
Yes.
Is this any different, do we know than?
You know, from what I, from what I could tell, what they did is they made sure that they included some right-of-ways and easements on it for stormwater runoff and some things like that. Was there something anybody else noticed on there? Was there anything we needed to discuss on the mail clinic one? It looked like it was just kind of the final with the drainage and utilities and a piece for the DOT, I think, isn't it?
For our, for our newest, newest members on the commission, remember with the hospital project, we went through what's called a preliminary plat, which is the initial presentation of how, in this case, the hospital was going to design and develop the property that they owned, as well as property, there's about 14 acres on the east side that they annexed to the city and purchased the property, annexed to that city, and now have consolidated all of the parcels, and there was five of them, that they've consolidated into one single lot. Lot one, block one of the Mail Clinic Health System Cannon Falls plat. So again, what we're doing here is taking individual parcels, and in this case, again, five of them, and creating a single lot, doing the survey, legally describing it, really kind of cleaning up meets and bounds legal descriptions and, and making for a better, more efficiently defined parcel of ground. Within that parcel, as Dan was mentioning, there's a couple of things I just wanted to point out. One is, the state of Minnesota purchased this piece, which is an outlot, has purchased this piece, and it's kind of an odd configuration, but the reason that it's oddly configured is if, if you looked back on the, on the highway department map, it's basically this piece. It's this piece in here. There's a part of the frontage road that's bisecting the hospital property. That's that piece, and the state of Minnesota now owns that piece, but it's, again, dedicated in the, in the plat as, as an outlot. There's also a fairly significant natural gas pipeline that exists in this area, which was covered by an easement before the plat. It's covered by an easement, so that's dedicated for the, the gas easement. This kind of winding easement in this location is where the sewer and water terminated just near grandpa's garage, coming up to this area, to the east and back north, to serve the hospital building, which is in here. And then also, the hospital is, is required, as all developers are, to provide utilities to the end of their property, in this case, the south border. So this 30-foot easement coming through there is sewer and water. On the east side of the site, I didn't say this would be easy, but on the east side of the site, in the, in the property that was annexed to the city, purchased by mail, a part of that property goes back to Goodhue County for the future, or this year, future construction of the southeast collector that goes all the way ultimately up to Highway 19. So this is all right-of-way in favor of Goodhue County, and again, that's in the green area on the bottom of the map. See that, just the only green line? That's down in, in, in that area. When that swings back to the north, that's county 24. That's that right-of-way. So the plat's been adjusted to accommodate for the future extension of, of the county road off of the, the roundabout from the, from the east interchange improvements on 52. Then we have, as we always do, we have perimeter easements for drainage and utility for around the sides of the property in the future, if we were ever to, to require them for any particular public utility. So it's really taken a number of parcels and a number of existing conditions, things that we had to do to accommodate the new building with sewer and water. It's taken all those things, put them into lot one, block one of the Mail Clinic Health System Cannon Falls plat. With your recommendation to approve this, it will go to the City Council with their approval and consent. It would actually be prepared then into a Mylar copy, we'd bring it back, Dan would sign it on behalf of the, of the Planning Commission, the mayor and, and city would sign it, and it would then ultimately be recorded with, with Goodhue County. So, it's kind of the final step, if you will, for the land development approvals of the Planning Commission for what's become a fairly complicated, you know, set of circumstances for the city in, in terms of planning and zoning for this particular project. But we're near the end. So if there's any questions on the, on the plat, I'll try to respond to those at this point.
Does anyone have any questions?
Okay.
Hearing none. I, I think we should come up with somebody for a motion.
I'll motion.
That's the deal. We've got a motion by Charnell to approve Resolution Number 2013-5. Do I have a second?
I will.
I've got Mr. Price. He's, he got that one. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the next discussion item, which is Item 7C, Dynamic Display Signage.
All of our favorites, I think. True. Let's see if we can see this. This one we might be able to get by with. Yeah, that's, that's probably okay. Danny, you can come up to, well, maybe we should turn off one of them, Bill, just so we can... At, at the last meeting, Danny Lind was here, that's, that's probably good enough, to present an idea, a request for a dynamic display sign to be placed on the south wall of the existing Brewster's building. And we talked about this, you saw this idea at the last meeting. You had asked me to talk with the city attorney, which I have done, in terms of the messaging and how the city might regulate content for these signs generally. In this case, we've got a specific proposal before us, but more of a general application of if we're going to allow these type of signs, how can we regulate content, if we can at all? So I'll report on that conversation that I had with the city attorney. Also, I've spent some time with Danny in the last two weeks to talk with him about the process that we'd have to go through in order to approve this particular signage, if we're going to approve it. The other somewhat limiting factor that's come up, that I talked with Danny about, was in, in speaking with the city attorney, it's almost impossible, if not impossible, to make a special exception for a single business in a single location in a single community for this type of signage. We can't just say, gee, we like this one, Danny, we're going to approve this, but we're not going to approve any others. And we've talked about that before. So in my conversations with the city attorney, what I was looking for is, is do we have other alternatives for, for doing this that would make reasonable, rational sense? And unfortunately, the answer is kind of no. The only way we could do this is if we re-zoned certain parts of the downtown, other than the B1, to allow this type of signage. So what we'd have to do is we'd have to go downtown and pick out one, or two, or three, or five, or 10, or 15 property owners and say, you know what? These are all unique, they're all different, and we're going to zone them differently from the balance of the downtown. And maybe it's one district, two districts, three districts, five districts, whatever it is. We're going to zone them different, but within those particular new zones that we came up with, we're only going to allow these dynamic display signs to exist in one of them, two of them, three of them, four of them, whatever we decide. It gets very cumbersome, very complicated, and pretty tricky legally to do that. So the attorney's not recommending that, I'm not recommending that. So we're left with kind of a stalemate. And I wanted to, on Danny's behalf, I wanted to come and have an additional conversation tonight with the Planning Commission because he would like to go ahead with this signage. He understands that we need to amend the ordinance to allow for it, and he needs a variance to do it, so there is some process ahead of him. And I basically kind of held him at bay here a little bit as we worked through some of these alternatives before coming to the, to the commission tonight. So we got a little bit of a challenge here in terms of dealing with this specific request. The messaging and the city attorney. We, we talked about this before, even when we talked in January and late last year about these kind of signs and our inability to really regulate the message. If we allow these, we can't say, well, you can say if, but you can't say but. You can say yes, you can't say no. We don't have that ability under First Amendment protections. So with that said, the, the messaging really, the, what will limit the messages in a case like this is what the applicant proposes to put on the sign. And at our meeting two weeks ago, I think Danny was pretty clear that his interest is, is menu-related messages and maybe special events for Brewsters. So he'll, in a sense, through the application, limit the message by his request for us to amend the ordinance, to a certain degree. The other thing that would limit his or anyone else's ability to, to put messages on a sign like this, it has to be limited to on-premise advertising. And let me give an example here. If Danny wanted to put on their Taco Tuesday, that's on-premise. He serves tacos on Tuesday, or he might, or he could. He couldn't put on their canoes and bikes for sale next Thursday afternoon at 2:00. He couldn't put on their things that, that aren't pertaining specifically to the nature of the business that he operates there. So there's going to be some limitations with message because he's limited to on-premise advertising. Nor can he advertise for restaurant ABC, which he wouldn't do anyway, but he can't advertise for restaurant ABC that's located out on Highway 52. Can't do it. He's, he's advertising for someone else. So on-premise messaging is, is a limiting factor, and that is a legal restriction. The third thing is, it's, it's kind of a self-regulating content. The example of Danny advertising for the restaurant out on Highway 52 that he doesn't own, well, he's not going to do that. He's not going to put it, an advertisement on this sign for that kind of message, nor is he going to put something probably on there that's possibly politically sensitive, perhaps religious, because what it will do, some customers will like it, some customers won't like it, and it's probably not good for business for those kind of messages. So there's some type of self-regulation here too, but that's about as good as it gets. I'm comfortable that, in my conversations with the city attorney, that if we're going to allow these kind of signs, whether it's for Brewsters or anyone else, yeah, we're taking a chance with message, but there's probably reason to believe that for the most part, we're going to be able to have some influence, some control, some ability to monitor those messages over time. I think we're okay with that. The second issue, and this is really why I brought Danny in tonight, the second issue is, back in January, when we ultimately kind of evolved to a consensus of opinion on these dynamic display signs, at that time, we said, you know, we're really not wild about these in the downtown. But we're okay with these kind of signs for institutions. A school could have it, a park could have it, probably a hospital could have it. We generally were okay with that. And we also said out in the Highway 52 corridor that we're okay with, with that, but we didn't specifically include, you know, the downtown in, in those conversations. So, if we're going to amend the ordinance, to include the downtown, we have to include the downtown in the B1 area. We can't just limit it to, to Brewsters in this case.
Well, and, and that's something we probably need to look at if we just started talking about the signs and we already got somebody interested in it.
Yeah. It becomes a little bit difficult now because we have a real applicant and someone who really wants to do something, so I always kind of caution Danny that, you know, I'm looking at the, the broader scope right now, but if, if I'm going to recommend to the commission that we do something like this, I would just want you to be aware that, that it's going to go beyond these particular property boundaries.
Yeah.
And we got to talk about that. The maximum 35% dynamic, remember we talked about if we've got 100 square foot sign, and that's what you're allowed, 65 square feet of that sign can be Dan Pid's restaurant. 35% or 35 square feet could be changeable copy, but there's a relationship between a, a static standard sign and the changeable lettering, the changeable copy portion of the sign, 35%. And Mr. Lind's proposal, that's not a 35% area, that's 100%. So there'll be something to talk about there. With regards to what we talked about earlier this year and late last year, the static messages with instantaneous change of message, we talked about having a static message there, and if it were to change, it would right-of-way instantaneously change to something else, that there's not a gap in between, there's not advertising in between, it's ABC, change EFG. We talked about, we talked about that. The 20-minute duration, we didn't resolve that, but clearly, the consensus of the commission was to, to force a sign to be up there with a specific message for 20 minutes was too long.
Yeah.
And we were going to change that, but we, it's still sitting at 20 minutes. We're going to shorten it up. But that was our...
Wasn't it five that we thought would be kind of reasonable?
We just didn't want to flash them back and forth and hurt them.
Right.
Yeah. I don't know if we got down to a specific time amount, Dan, but we did say the 20 minutes was, was too much, that we could have signs change more quickly than that. And we just didn't, I don't think we got down to a specific number.
Yeah.
And then the brightness standard. We, we do have a general brightness standard, we've talked about a little bit a month ago, that we got to make sure that if we're going to allow these type of signs in an area that, in a downtown area that, that is adjacent to a residential area, that we have particularly, particularly careful about making sure that, that, that the brightness of these signs doesn't affect the neighboring residential properties, or in this case, the traffic on either one of the two highways. So we do have a general standard that we talked about earlier this year that's, that's still in agreement. So I think for Mr. Lind's proposal, with what we talked about long before he showed up, was it'd be the 35% limit of the, of the sign area, and I think probably these other things are things that we could probably find a way to, to work through.
Well, and really, for what he wants to put on there, like his example, it, it didn't really seem so much like he wanted much of it to change anyway.
Yeah.
You know, it looked to me like, at least from the proposal, you know, basically, it looked like what he had superimposed on there was like us on Facebook for extra savings or something.
Mm-hmm.
Just to kind of help, you know, get his name out. Well, that, that's, you know, once someone liked something on Facebook, all their friends see they liked it.
And that was just...
An example?
That was just an example of what the sign was like.
Yeah.
What I want to advertise is daily menu.
Yeah.
Say Monday, whenever the lunch special is.
Sure.
On their Monday lunch, 11 to 5:00.
Well, and you know, I would hate to see us limit, since his sign is so much smaller than he could have, I would hate to see us limit it so that, you know, while someone's driving past the bank or something, that, you know, they'd be able to actually see what that special is, you know? If we make them stick with only 35% on a sign that size, that's going to be a pretty small area to advertise that special.
Dave, if we go, if we accept the 100%, is that basically saying that's what it's going to be going forward?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
And again, that's why Dan's back tonight, is, is, you know, we're going to have to wa, if, if we're going to go ahead with a recommendation to make this type of signage allowable in the downtown, we still need to establish standards that will go into our ordinance. Now, if we want to establish standards that specifically allowed this, that's your prerogative. If we don't want to allow standards that allow specifically this, then that's your prerogative too. So we've got some things to, to work through. But let me finish the, the picture here, and then you'll kind of see from a, from a broader perspective, some of the, the challenges that I think exist here with regards to the, the proposal. And again, I made it pretty clear to Dan, I'm not picking on him, and I know you're not either. It's just that we don't have this in our ordinance right now, and we started this process before this sign showed up. So we're going to...
It is a good thing we at least had conversations about it.
True. True.
Otherwise, you'd really be looking at a while before something happened.
All right. The, the Brewster's application itself, this is kind of where I see where, where we're There's going to have to be an amendment to the sign ordinance to allow a dynamic display signage, to whatever standards we have, because again, as we've talked, the only folks that can use these right now are convenience stores, gas stations, and primarily banks. Time, temperature, fuel prices, that's it. So if we're going to allow these type of signs, whether it's again, specifically tailored around Danny's proposal or not, we've got to amend the ordinance. And Danny is prepared to make an application requesting an ordinance change. I wasn't comfortable in suggesting to him what that language ought to be at this point. So, that's number one. Number two is that the variance is going to be required for the placement of the sign on the south side of that building. And again, jumping forward, and I've told Danny this, it, it is really kind of a unique set of circumstances there, where there's a piece of private property between an alley and his south wall, and our sign ordinance only allows signs to be placed that front public right-of-way. In this case, yeah, you can see the public right-of-way.
Right.
But the property line is, is divided between the public land and his by property owned by First Farmers and Merchants Bank. Now, I know Danny's had some conversation with the owners, and I don't know that that's a particular problem if, if a variance application was made, but there has to be a variance approved.
Right.
To also allow signage at that location.
The bank has told me they have no problem with it.
Yeah. Well, you know, and, and when it comes to the, the part about it, how, how much light it's putting off, you know, you may have to opt for red LEDs that will change instead of like a clear color, you know? Because a, a red light is going to look different, you know? It's, yeah, that in itself, that's not going to seem quite as bright as, as like a straight-on cool white or whatever it would be. So I don't think you'd have a lot of trouble there for the sign. And then I think, wasn't there some comment or talk about shutting it off when you guys go home? And then I think, wasn't there some comment or talk about shutting it off when you guys go home? Yeah.
So I think, like I say, certain conditions I think we can control cooperatively with any applicant on, on those type of details. Don't necessarily need to have them written black and white specifically in the ordinance on some of those things. Cause I think we can control those administratively through the process. But again, if we're gonna pursue this particular sign, this specific sign, if, if Danny's gonna pursue it, he's gonna need the zone, the sign amendment, and he's gonna need a variance. Um, but I think again, the, the real bottom line, which I really wanted to pass on to the commission, is, is the last one, which is, we can't just tailor an ordinance and limit it to one specific property. We can't do that. So if we're gonna do it, and you're in favor of doing it, I'm gonna need some input from the commission on the kind of standards, the kind of allowances you want to make available to not just this piece of property, but to those beyond it if we're gonna open it up to the B-one district. And like I say, I just don't see that rezoning different properties downtown to get at this issue make any sense. And that's about the only legal way we can do that. Our, our downtown isn't big enough to do that. So it's, it's a little bit of a sticky wicket, and that's why I wanted, before Danny finished his official application for this, I wanted to come back and, and share with you the information that I received from the city attorney and, and kinda just let you know that it's a little bit broader perspective than we talked about at the last meeting.
Well, we have to be flexible enough to change with new technologies, so.
Yeah.
We have to, you know, I think that's always the issue.
Well, I think we're gonna have to amend our-
So if you're talking about amending, amending ordinances and, and a special permit or variance.
I think if, if anything, we may have to amend more than one ordinance.
Well-
No, I mean, you know, cause you're, you're talking to all these different groups, too. You look at any of the properties that we have out on Long fifty-two, technically, if they were to come in with a changeable copy kinda thing, they should be able to do that, too.
What I'm saying is, we don't maybe understand the technology. Is, things change, and we have to be a little flexible with the new methods of advertising that come up.
Yeah.
That, I mean, it's, we can't just be stuck in, in one place. We have to have some flexibility.
I know Danny, Dennis Kalo, and myself all independently, and in some cases cooperatively, looked and looked and looked for sign designs that would more comfortably fit within the historic district, our existing standards, and would allow some type of signage similar to this. And all came up empty-handed. We were all kinda surprised by that. Maybe a million-dollar idea, Colleen. So-
Yeah, I mean, the sign itself can be customized to fit in, into our needs.
If we're concerned, is the concern that the sign looks a little too new for downtown historic district? Is that-
I don't think that's it, is it?
N- not so much new, but it's definitely not consistent or compatible with the design standards for our historic district. Now, the historic district is a district. It's not a single building. It's, it's numerous buildings that were put together as a unit and certified as the historic district. Some of the buildings are contributing buildings to the district. Some of the buildings are not necessarily contributing to the district, but they're a part of the district. So an example like that, the Brewster's building, which is a composite of several former buildings put together as one, is not designated, nor was it designated as a contributing building in the historic district when the district was created. Compare that to like the winery building or, or Mill Street. There's differences in our buildings in the downtown in terms of their classification. If we wanted to make allowances for those differences, we could probably do it in a sign ordinance, a little bit more comfortably than we might be able to do it other ways. And not getting back to the, to the, to the newer question, because even this building is pretty old, it just wasn't designated as a contributing building originally.
So you're saying, you, you guys sat down and couldn't, this, there's no way you could make this sign look retro, huh? I guess this will be outside.
The problem is, the problem is trying-
Yeah.
The problem is trying to come up with something to, to meet the size standards that we're talking about.
Yeah.
The smaller, you can't get enough text on there with large enough lettering for anybody to, to read anything.
Be able to read it.
Yeah. So you almost have to be-
A bigger sign.
A bigger sign to get any kind of text on there. If I want them to put on there Monday night, uh, our Monday night special, quarter-pound hamburger, a dollar and a quarter, French fries, a dollar, uh, grilled cheese, a dollar, two dollar, uh, quarter-pound chicken breast sandwich, two dollars. You're gonna have some room to, to get some lettering on there.
Yeah, you gotta be able to see it visually from, um, I see the issue.
With the signs, are you able to find ones where, like you were saying, where part of the sign will stay and part of it will change, so that you could do the Monday, Monday specials? And under that, you know, maybe it's not thirty-five percent. Maybe there's a different number that we have to, you know, or maybe that we don't necessarily, in our ordinance, specify a percent that could be changeable copy. We say all of it could be changeable copy. But if, you know, X amount of the sign is like set, and there's only part of it that's changing, maybe the frequency is more often than if they wanna change the whole, you know what I mean?
Give, I'll give you the numbers on this one, because this sign is about fifteen square feet, I think.
Uh, yes, it's thirty-three inches by sixty-nine inches.
And to get your message across, it has to be that big. Is that what you said, I think?
I could, I could maybe go a little bit smaller, but not much. And then, then it's a matter of with that type of signage, where's the next level of sign that they'd make? I mean, I talked to him about a, I talked to him about a sign that was two-foot-one by four-foot-one. And the sign company told me, you don't have enough room to get any lines of text on there and have the letter big enough to read it.
And running copy is out of it, that we agreed with that, that that's no good. What if you hang it in the front? How big can it be then?
That's the eight-square-foot projecting. We looked for a projecting sign that would come out into the street, which would have more historic context in terms of its design.
Right.
But the problem is, again, it's, it's the size issue and the fact that we haven't been able to find any manufacturer right now that produces a projecting sign with kind of a historic design context that includes this type of technology. Obviously, there's no historic context with dynamic display sign. So it's a catch-22, and I just was just seeking input from the commission, now knowing the rest of the story here, as it's kind of evolved the last couple of weeks. If we're going to pursue this with Danny, we've gotta pursue it on a little bit broader basis. And I'm willing to kinda take a look at the ordinances and see if we can come up with a way to further limit a little bit the potential of these kind of signs proliferating through the downtown. But the sign manufacturers, at least current technology is, it's kinda is what it is, and it's the sizes that they are. And if you really wanna make it worthwhile, and, and you're gonna make the investment that Danny would have to make to get this sign, you know, bigger is optimal.
David, if we go with, um, this on the side like we do here, are we then kind of opening ourselves up to the rest of the street, the historic district, having a sign that size in the front?
Not necessarily this size. Let me explain, I, I don't have a bird's eye of the, of the lot, but let me tell you how this works. This is the south wall of, of Danny's building, and kinda the south line of his property. Our ordinance is, is based on the, in this case, the width of the building and the height of the building at a factor of fifteen percent. He'd be allowed about ninety square feet on this wall by ordinance, if he faced a street or a public alley. Which he doesn't.
Right.
But if he did, he would be allowed about ninety square feet.
That's where the variance part is.
Right.
So he'd be allowed about ninety square feet.
Yeah.
Now-
We should be that flexible.
The reason he's got that allowance mark is he's got a fairly high building, cause again, it's width by height. Downtown, we have high buildings. We have some lower buildings, but, but we don't have the same width. We have narrower buildings. So you might not get the maximum hundred square feet, maybe you're only allowed sixty or maybe fifty. But whatever you're allowed under the ordinance then could be used for a projecting sign, which would come out into the, on, on Forestry at least, out into the street.
Sure.
But it may not be a hundred feet, it might not be ninety feet, it's gonna be based on width and height, and whether they've got other signage. Corner lot properties have a distinct advantage in our ordinance, and this isn't a corner lot property, but if it were, it has a distinct advantage because they get the maximum signage on, on both sides.
I don't know why we couldn't look at it as a corner lot.
Yeah.
Really, yeah, I, I would agree.
It almost is a corner lot.
I mean, as long as, as long as the people in the corner lot are okay with that.
That's why I think the variance here, and that's like with Danny, my sense is from other variances that we've had come in, I think there's practical difficulties here in uniqueness. The variance, I don't think is a, is a huge challenge to, to justify and process getting signage on that south wall in this case. It is kind of a unique set of circumstances, but it's the type of signage. If you wanted to come in with a, with a wall sign, uh, that said Brewster's, like, I guess I don't have that, well, I guess maybe I do. Now, hold it up because everybody's seen it, it's gonna be a little bit easier to see. That's a very attractive sign on the front of the building. That's a very attractive front of the building. If he wanted to put Brewster's Bar and Grill on the south side, something like this, and he faced the public right-of-way, he could do it. Or if he wanted to get a variance, he could probably support a variance and get it as a flat wall sign. But this sign, we're still not, there's no allowance for that sign. So it's a set of circumstances that I think are unique to a certain degree. And I think again, the variance is definitely a, a supportable application, in my view.
I think that's worth a shot.
Forget what the improvement that Danny is making on that whole front.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's far better to have it on the south side like this than have the projecting sign, myself, just for the look.
I, I actually would agree.
Personally, myself. I think I'd be willing to give up a bigger sign there than have a projecting sign going out the front. I would think it makes more common sense, but our ordinances aren't always written to common sense.
Well, and I, I think it would be hard, I think it would be hard to find a changeable copy that was easy enough to read, that would project from the side of a building, because everybody remembers that corner a while, might, maybe a lot of people do. The corner used to have a cafe sign, and at one time that used to light up. So it was an outside, yeah, it was an outside sign, said cafe on it. But go ahead and try and figure out a way to put print on there so people can see what your specials are.
That's the one Dan's talking about, right there.
Yeah.
That's a projecting sign. And, and again-
It's not a changeable copy, but-
That's true.
But it's a projecting sign. And the projecting signs fit well in the historic district.
They do, as long as they're real narrow and they fit up against the building.
So the simplest way is what? Do we have to amend the ordinance?
Yes. We can't do this by variance.
Just can't do it that way, huh? Can't, and, okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
What, what dictates changeable copy? If it stays one-
Message or if it changes?
For over twelve hours, then it's not. How did the Darien guy with it for how many years down there with the little trailer out in front?
Well, they, they've been grandfathered in, so it would've been there before two thousand and six, or they got a permit for that.
Oh, that little trailer that they pull out?
That's how they used to set it out there, I mean, from when I was five, six years old.
Yeah, that is changeable copy, though.
Legal non-conforming, we have several of those that came in prior to probably two thousand and six, or they got a special permit at some point between two thousand and six and the fall of two thousand and eight. We haven't been approved any since I've been here, but there are several out there. And, and the Merchant, the Merchants Bank sign.
Someone did, someone did change their copy, uh, on Monday.
Worth the risk. To, to amend the ordinance and, and go the very- Yeah, yeah, I think it's worth the risk.
With the way, with the way advertising is going, changeable copy is, you know, that's what people want.
Ask the expert on the end there, what's the ways of going? It's changing every day, isn't it?
I, I'm probably gonna be the, say exactly opposite of what everybody else is thinking here, cause I'm not a fan of dynamic signs. I, I've seen some cities that have approved one thing, and the next thing you know, it ruins the town.
It ruins the town?
Well, I don't wanna, I, my concern would be, we're gonna change an ordinance, and then the next thing you know, you'd drive down Main Street Cannon Falls or Fourth Street Cannon Falls, and we look like a little mini Vegas, cause there's lights flashing everywhere.
You mean it-
Shining everywhere.
It would look like something's going on downtown.
But they're not gonna flash.
Well, no regard, I mean, just-
Well, yeah, but you do have to remember that the cost of these signs is usually what prohibits people from buying them in the first place. And with all those people that we've got on Main Street there, I can't see every one of those business owners going, wow, that's what we need, a changeable copy sign, and then we'll be great. Yeah, I'll foot up that extra, you know, three grand or four or whatever it is. It's not cheap for those signs.
A year, maybe half the price of what you're mentioning.
Yeah, okay, so there, so the hair salon's not gonna spend eight grand on a sign that may or may not improve their situation, I don't think.
It's a fair thing to say. It is a concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah. You don't, you don't know what's gonna happen, though. That's the problem.
There's some intangibles here that will have some limitations on, on the proliferation of these signs.
Well, some of it's already happened in Stillwater, from what it was fifteen years ago. You see, you know, it's migrating more and more and more. As the younger crowd takes over mom and dad's shop, and things change.
Yeah, but that instant, to, to know instantly what's going on, you drive by, oh, is today the day for the hamburgers or whatever you offer today? You know, what's the special today? You drive by, is it today or was it Thursday? I can't remember, I don't know.
The other thing, in my opinion, most of the businesses downtown, the barber shops, the hair salons, the hardware stores, uh, the jewelry store.
Yeah.
People driving into town from out of town know what they have. If they're running a special, uh, they've normally got something in the window or something. But somebody driving into town on a Thursday afternoon doesn't know that Brewster's has tacos on Thursday. Or if they're coming in Monday, they don't know they can get quarter-pound burger for a dollar and a quarter. If I owned most of those businesses downtown, I would not invest the money for something like this. But for a bar or restaurant, uh, I think it pays off.
It does, I agree.
Or it could.
Yes.
I think the word dynamic scares everybody.
Yeah.
They're not all that dynamic.
I actually, I actually, uh, think that this sign looks better than this sign that's already on the front of the building.
Yeah.
And the one on the front of the building is backlit in the evening, and it's bigger than this one.
Yeah.
And-
But you have to change that one.
That one's coming down.
Yeah.
That one would come down.
Right. The only thing that's kinda too bad about that south wall, I know there's no, no, not really any other good place to put it, is that you just don't get the traffic heading south on Forest.
Right.
They're not gonna necessarily be able to see it. That's too bad.
Who, uh, donate three feet as a public right-of-way for bike traffic? And then they can take it off their taxes, and then it's a public right-of-way with a sidewalk? And that solves the whole problem?
You're pretty creative, you know?
I think Mr. Price is looking at management over here.
Well, I think in all seriousness, I, I think again, and there's not an application official yet, but I think to bring a variance, to allow a sign on the south side of that building, given the circumstances that exist there, you're gonna get a recommendation from me in all likelihood to approve it, if it's a reasonable approach. And I think what, what Danny's talking about here is reasonable. I think there are questions about the size, and there's some other details on this particular s- sign on the south side. But if he came in with a non-dynamic display sign, excuse me, Kurt, if he came in with just a wall sign for that location,
No-brainer.
I would be the first one to support a variance in this case, because I think the circumstances are unique. So I think we can get there without even trying to manipulate, in a sense, the ownership of the, of the land uh, with the approval of a variance. But that doesn't get us to the point where he can do the sign that he wants to do.
Well, I think Danny said it, although with the other merchants in there, it, it doesn't, you know, reasonably hold that a lot of them are gonna jump into that type of signing as well, being the historic district that they are and the type of businesses that they are. So-
And we can, in, in an ordinance like this, too, and I've talked with Dan, Danny about this, And we can, in, in an ordinance like this, too, and I've talked with Danny, Danny about this, you know, this is a dynamic display wall sign. It's placed on the wall. It's not a projecting sign. A lot of our businesses downtown, if they could, if there was a good projecting sign that had dynamic display lettering like this, they probably would be wiser to do that, because they've got it from both, visibility from both sides. To replace a wall sign that exists there today with a wall sign even like this, it's expensive, and it's probably, at least on Main Street, and even, I think, coming in on Nineteen East and West, our business is there. It doesn't, it doesn't do the investment justice in, in most cases, I don't think. You're gonna want to get traffic visible at your sign both ways. And that's what we really tried to do, and I see Dennis here now, too, we've tried to do in the last couple of weeks is figure out, is there a, 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 a good-looking projecting sign that could go on the west front of his building to kinda soften this historic preservation goal that we've got with a projecting sign that does have some historic context, still look good, maybe it costs a little bit more, but you get visibility from two directions, where now he's got it from one.
What about the, um, what about the sign that's there? If, if you were to try and put a changeable copy there, would that just defeat, do you think? Trying to put one because people wouldn't see it long enough?
We still have to change the ordinance.
Well, yeah, I know we'd still have to change the ordinance, but, you know, that, you'd get kind of two directions at a hundred and twenty degree angle or whatever for a while.
For a very brief time.
Yeah, yeah.
Very brief time.
Well, there's, yeah, there's risk on your part, too.
Yeah, the, the south wall, at least you get all the traffic coming...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Into town.
Coming down the hill.
Off the highway, and they've got a good half a block to a block to read it. In the winter time, when there's no leaves in the trees or anything, they got a couple of blocks that they can read.
My experience with advertising is, sometimes it just surprises the heck out of you what works and what doesn't work.
Yes.
So there's a degree of risk on your part, I think.
Well, I suppose after he's invested in the sign, and it's already approved and legal, he could always try it here and talk to somebody that might be able to mount it for you, and try it out front.
I, I still think it's worth the risk. Just my opinion.
I, I just think that this whole dynamic, changeable copy type signage is, it's only gonna, the interest in it's only really only gonna increase. So I think there's definitely, we definitely need to do something with it.
In a sense, it's changeable copy, but I would be putting on there a lunch special that will be up there for five, six, seven hours.
Yeah.
And at like five o'clock in the evening, or four thirty, it would change to what the evening special is, and then that would run the rest of the day in the evening, until it's shut off at closing time. So, yeah, you can call it changeable copy, which it is, but it's not like it's gonna be changing on a...
Right.
Hourly basis, or half hour basis, all day long.
Well, let me ask you this, Danny, if I come by and your sign tells me that I can get a dollar and a quarter, you know, cheeseburger, but it's Tuesday, it's not Monday, are you gonna honor that? That's what I wanna know.
Yes, I would.
For you.
Well, the nice thing about this particular sign is it's, you can program it.
Yep.
So, at a certain time of day, it's gonna change, and on Tuesday, the Tuesday special's gonna come up. And Wednesday, the Wednesday special's gonna come up. And so the only thing that'll change that is if we go in and change our daily special or something.
Yeah.
If it's not right, you just unplug it.
Yeah. It'd be nice to see a typo on there, wouldn't it?
You would like that.
Yeah.
Whoops.
Well, you know...
Seen some.
Steak, a dollar and a quarter.
I ate a typo one time on a, just a little eight and a half by eleven sign that I put up in the bar, advertising cribbage tournaments on Saturday, and I misspelled a word. Well, at least you find out people are reading the sign, because I got a lot of comments about it, so you know people are reading it.
Everybody's a critic, huh?
But I, I really would like to have, and I'm open to other suggestions, too, but I really wanna have the ability to have enough space and something where it's telling people what the daily special is. If you, if you're driving into a strange town, and you're driving through, and it's five thirty in the evening, and you're hungry, and there's four different restaurants to pick from, and one says, okay, today is taco day. Tacos are a dollar sixty-five, or whatever, and you happen to like tacos, where are you gonna go? Or if you see on Monday, a quarter pound hamburger for a dollar and a quarter, french fries a buck. Hey, that looks like a pretty good deal. Let's stop and eat. So it's gonna bring people in.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't, yeah.
I think maybe what he's proposing to do, the sign's a little too small, but I don't know how we can get around it and save face with every other storefront that's down the block is the problem. It's part of the problem where you can't tailor it per site. Where if maybe we had it under a certain specific permit application, then you could have a little bit more tailoring power, and then every year, he's gotta come back in, or you do it two years, or, then you can revoke the permit, or something like that, too.
He's not gonna spend eight thousand dollars on a sign and have you revoke it next year.
I don't wanna revoke it.
I think we need to move it from here to the next level.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to, I think we're gonna have to change the ordinance.
Yeah.
What do we need to do for David tonight?
For Danny?
What I'm, what I'm hearing is there's support, some support.
It's not just that.
No, and I, but I think, my recommendation, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this, which is the question here, if we're gonna do this as a city, I think I need to have your support to see if we can come up with at least some standards that will narrow the field some in the downtown location without unreasonably restricting these type of signs, but doing it maybe a little bit more rationally beyond Danny's sign. I, I, I don't wanna use what he's telling us necessarily as the hard and fast, black and white model for this kind of signage downtown. I think it would be wise, and I'm reacting a little bit to Colleen, too, is that, to, to, to have some standards in here that if we're gonna allow them in the B1 downtown as a whole, as a zoning district, that we try to narrow it down some. And I do think one way to do that, that makes some rational sense, which is not gonna slow Dan's sign down, is this issue of contributing versus non-contributing buildings in the historic district. That's something we can hang our hat on today. It's already been done. It's been decided by others. Where some buildings downtown that are, that are truly contributing historic structures to the downtown, maybe they're not gonna be allowed this type of signage until and if our sign folks come up with designs that are historically acceptable. You know, that would, that this type of technology, this type of signage could find its way into being allowed on or for placement on a historic building. You know, I don't think we're there yet. At least, we haven't seen it.
Can, can we tailor it to, is this a wall sign? Can you tailor it to two different categories? You have one for the wall sign, and you have one for the projecting sign? Can we set it up that way? And then that gives us quite a bit more control over everything, and size and everything else?
If someone would come...
Well, we, we could require a conditional use permit to have a sign like this, can't we?
We can, and in the conversations with the, with the attorney on that, again, it's just like our conditional uses in our zoning. Outdoor dining is conditional use permit to a restaurant. They've gotta follow certain requirements in order to get it, but it's not the kind of thing where we can say if they follow the conditions, you can't have it. So we can't use conditional use in a case like this with signage to say, you know, if you meet all of the conditions, we're still gonna say we don't like it, because it's green, and we think it ought to be blue. So the conditional use doesn't get us, give us great legal attitude. I'd almost rather say, okay, here's our standards. You meet the standards. You, as an applicant, tell us what it is you're gonna do with your sign, and as long as you meet our standards, yeah, we're opening the door a little bit, but you're gonna be allowed to, to use, to put up your sign. The conditional use isn't, isn't the best vehicle for saying no, if we wanna say no, because whatever conditions we establish, if we're gonna establish the conditions anyway, and you meet them, why put the applicant through the process? That's kinda my...
True.
But if they don't meet the standards that we set...
Yeah.
They can't come in anyway unless they amend the ordinance.
But we could make an exception and say this is more of a corner lot than a... Couldn't you kinda put this in that situation?
I, I can't, but I just, like you say, Bruce, I, I think with this one, we'll do one application for a zoning amendment and a variance. We're only gonna charge one fee, but it's gonna be combined into one process. And like I said, I just think that the circumstances are such here that the variance is, is a pretty high probability of getting approved. And I think anybody else who might have similar situations in the downtown, I don't know that there are any, if they came in for a variance, fine. But if they came in, if they're, if they're a non-contributing building, and they had a corner lot, and they wanted to have a sign like this on one side, but not the other, and we have the standards to allow it, they could do it, without a variance.
Dudley's next to the library.
Yeah.
That would be one that would...
Dudley's, yeah. So like I said, I think the ones that are truly, in the circumstance that we have here, there may not be another one with exactly the same conditions here, which is why I think a variance is the, is the best way to go about it. Now, the attorney has said if we, if we put conditions in our B1 district that allow this for some businesses, but not others, like a contributing building versus non-contributing, and a contributing building, the winery as an example, they wanted to come in, they weren't allowed by our standards to do it, they could come in as a variance, and, and the attorney said that would be fine. So there would still be an opportunity there, if we do it that way. Maybe that's a good way to do it. I, but again, it's, it's your, it's your choice. If, if we think we can support these in the downtown area with some conditions, and you wanna make that recommendation, I can certainly work on those and, and see if we can come up with something. That seems to be the consensus here.
I think we should get it.
All in favor?
Not fair.
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to look at it for years or something, or...
We can, we're all talking about it. Let's just get after it.
Yeah, let's get going. Next level.
Okay, thank you.
And that brings us to the next item here on the agenda, which is Planning Commission Member Comments. Commenting?
Any comments?
All right, so we've got a comment here by Dude. Is there any Planning Commission Member comments?
Hey, Dan, I, I just, Steve Dabell showed up, and he was involved with the mural...
Yeah.
Project that we approved.
Yeah.
On his behalf, I, I'm apologizing for his, uh, blateness. He thought it was a seven o'clock, not a six thirty meeting, so...
Yeah, well, it was at one time. Is there any other comments? Anything? All right, that brings us to number nine.
I got one. The light rail, or the speed train thing, how'd that meeting go over? I wasn't able to make, make that.
I was there. I would say it's got a long ways to go in terms of scoping out the alternatives. There was a...
How was the turnout?
It was good. It was good. But I would say, and again, I didn't, I knew a handful of people there, but judging by some of the questions, and, and, and Mr. Samuelson was there, and he leaned over and said that he recognized a lot of the people there from some of the discussions on the wind turbines. So, and I think the questions were along the lines of if, if this is gonna happen, how does it impact...
You wouldn't say something.
How does it impact the property owners within the corridor that they're looking at? They've just been through wind turbines. They're going through the CapEx project. Now here's something else. So I mean, I think it, it definitely got some folks' attention with, boy, another big project that's coming through Goodview County, and I think there was a fair number of people there because of that issue.
Will you enlighten me? I'm in the dark. I don't know who we're talking about.
There's so many meetings. Every night, you could go to a meeting.
Yeah, if you wanted to volunteer...
High-speed rail from the Twin Cities area to Rochester.
And beyond, probably.
Or St. Cloud.
Oh, sure.
What this, what they're proposing in the long term.
Yeah. But there's, there's been money allocated for the study phase. This has been studied in part several times in the past. There seems to be a certain confidence now that we will proceed to the point of at least assessing the feasibility of doing this or not in a preliminary corridor, and if it gets to that point, then it's gotta be funded. So I think it's still a ways down the road, if it's gonna happen at all.
That means ten years, probably. Sounds like ten.
What's your log?
I'm just curious, 'cause Channel Nine had done a little blurb on it.
As far as Cannon Falls goes, and I didn't specifically ask the question on behalf of Cannon Falls, but there were some other communities represented there that did ask the question about stops in their community. And there wasn't a clear yes or a clear no. I think the clear answer is probably not, because that defeats the, the notion of having high-speed rail, so...
Yeah, they're saying two hundred miles an hour.
Yeah. Now, it depends on the type of train that they, that they ultimately end up designing for and financing. Some are slower, some are faster. But clearly, the faster they go, the less probable it is that there will be stops along the way, possibly anyplace. So they were pretty careful in answering that, that they have a long ways to go before they decide the type of equipment.
And that would actually defeat the purpose of having it, I would think.
Yeah, because you got cities in Rochester, employees living in Cannon Falls, and...
And that came up, but, like I say, I, my view is, if it gets built at all, I think the, the airports are gonna drive the, the use of this. You have Minneapolis Airport...
Well, are they planning on funding it, or are they looking to acquire?
They're the partner of the overall plan, but no, they won't fund it.
Well...
But if they can't expand the airport in the cities, and you have high-speed rail to Rochester, it creates a feeder opportunity for air traffic.
Also the same if it goes to St. Cloud.
Or St. Cloud.
Why it opens up a lot.
But you're right about the commuting traffic. It does nothing if they're not gonna stop, but if they stop, it slows it down, and then it's really a...
You know, the, the one thing that is nice, though, is that we are actually about halfway between the cities in Rochester, so... Cannon Falls would be a great idea for the, the one stop. So now we just need a parking ride.
I, I did have a question, though, about the trail systems. You know, they're finishing that bridge up, up at the dam. And the DNR is gonna run a trail from the dam into the city, as I understand it. But do they have the funds to complete it now, after they finish the bridge? Or if not, do they have the funds to just make a rough trail into Cannon Falls?
They don't, they don't have the funds based on their budget to completely construct the trail this year. They're anticipating next year, looking at the bonding bill. Their, I, this particular segment's a high priority statewide for funding, so...
What's the city's contribution to that on our end?
Our contribution is, they're gonna come in near the fairgrounds, and we've got some work to do to connect the Milltown's trail to the downtown area. We've got several segments in there.
And we'll be, we'll be paving those, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, well, my, my, probably. Well, my, my thoughts were, if they don't have enough money, they can at least make the trail an off-road trail, you know, to get people moving back and forth, anyway. Because there's a lot of off-road bicycles out there, too, so...
I would, I would say, Bruce, in that there wasn't a bonding bill with money for that particular segment this year, that doesn't mean there's not money available for trail construction. This segment continues to be a high priority in the state.
I agree.
And it wouldn't shock me that either some money becomes available to, to do at least the grade work, and/or money becomes available to finish the job.
Yeah, I thought we were shocked. Yeah, we were shocked with the Highway Department here recently.
But the bridge is going in for sure?
Uh, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
You know, I was just at the lake before the meeting, and I saw all kinds of gear out there moving around.
It's gonna be cool.
It looks to me like they've got a classified base run all the way along that tree line next to the field.
Well, they have to keep, they'll keep it up above. They won't let it, they won't make the trail go down low by the water. They'll keep it up high, because they've got certain restrictions. DNR's...
They probably don't wanna flood either, and, yeah.
So the trail will go high. It won't go right down by the... It won't go right down by the river.
Yeah.